Visiting Beautiful Park County stopped by the Vintage Beehive at their new location, one fifteen East High Street, Rockville, Indiana. We have antiques, vintage items, homemade, handmade, and handcrafted.
Let's wage the flag of the United States of America into the republic for which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Dr. Kim, we'll let you go first.
Thank you. Okay, so my husband and I own a property at three oh seven North Erie Street. And it is...
Okay, I'm gonna try to get them married.
Right, it's a nuisance property. So if you're on Erie Street, it's the line with the weeds and it's the garage doors falling in.
Yeah.
It's next to the trailer park.
Okay.
So to the left of the trailer.
You own that?
Mm-hmm.
Congratulations.
Thank you. It's actually a really good house. I guess the grandparents had owned it and then the daughter got ahold of it and it looked, we cleaned it out. And so it looked like there was probably drug use and a lot of bad things happening in there. No meth lab or anything like that. So we were going to renovate it and rent it, but then my husband had an knee injury and that was no go. So we said we'd sell it. We only had to quit claim deed to the property. And the folks who want to buy it and have agreed to buy it, and we've kept extending their closing, they want us to quiet the title because it has eight to nine liens against it. That's a big problem. And one of them is the town of Rockville. So long story short, our law, normal lawyer that I've been using for this is Nick, and he's your attorney. And to use him, I have to get through the process with the town first before we get to trying to advertise it, get a court date and advertise it. But we paid ninety-five hundred dollars for the property. It's, sale price is like twenty-two thousand and it's still gonna be worth probably twice that much once they renovate it. Having said that, if we give you eighteen hundred dollars and then lose the property, we are out a lot of money for no reason. So that's why I've come to request just that we can be, I know technically we owe it, but that we can be forgiven that just so we can move forward.
You owe because you bought the lien against it, right?
Hmm.
You owe it because you bought it with a lien against it?
We bought it, another group bought it at the tax sale. And then a year later, we bought it from a group in Indianapolis that buys up a lot of tax sales.
Okay.
And we got a quit claim deed from them, never thinking we need to quiet the title. We were just going to renovate it and rent it. So that was okay with us at the time.
Well, Nick, can you jump in here? I mean, the board ladies who left it with the money owed.
So what I told her is that I, you know, I'm fine quite entitled for her, but I can't do that without standing lien to the town. So I told her she needed to address the town, whether there's a settlement agreement or...
Did we file against this person?
Small claims.
It's a small claims judgment. And when you get a small claims judgment, it attaches to the property in the county. So it's about lien against the property. There are some other liens against the property. Our thoughts are we can probably quiet title, but I told her I can't represent her as to that, that she needed to address the lien with the town. Other than that, I don't have a conflict, is what I said. Your lien is for about seventeen hundred or eighteen hundred, I think.
Right.
It was a small claims utility case against the three-time previous owner, I think.
Yeah. Well, I don't...
What I would tell you is your legal counsel is that you're not gonna be able to collect from that owner, so.
Right.
So I'm...
The other side of that is we have hopefully movement on a property that needs to be fixed up.
Right. So that's something you guys have to weigh.
And the people who want to buy have actually, I believe, fixed up another property in town successfully that turned into a very nice property. So that was our hope for it, that it be significantly improved.
So I told her it's something she'd have to address with you guys that I really couldn't be the get between.
I don't see the point in not. I mean, we're not gonna see the money, so why not have our property?
Previous owner deceased.
No, they're just not somebody you're ever gonna be able to collect from.
Thought we'd eat here.
Despite my...
I'll make a motion we resolve the lien.
As to that property, not as to the owner, previous owner, but as to the real estate.
Yeah, I'll say it.
Hold on, favor.
How did you say that? Is it a real estate warrant?
It's a real estate, so it's a lien on the real property, but not the judgment against the prior credit.
Thanks for trying.
Thank you all.
That's that property got hit by the, um...
Skid steer.
Skid steer. A few years back. By Russell's trailer park.
Well, Cindy?
Yeah, so I have on the agenda, Randy's put this where we have the invoice for the housing assessment study. I know the town of Rockville approved up to two thousand dollars. So your portion of that is gonna be one thousand eight hundred and eighty-seven dollars. So I have the invoice and whatever Randy needs me to do or to say.
We actually approved to pay that back in August in a meeting up to two thousand dollars. She just, she doesn't have the actual total that we...
Pay the bills.
I'm sorry.
Pay the bills.
That we're, that we agreed to pay upon. So I just wanted, I told her since she was coming, I would prove that that was, ended up being eighteen eighty-seven, so.
I'd say, well, could you check out there? The motion? Now it's already been a pretty...
Yeah, it was approved in August up to two thousand. She just wanted to clarify everybody the total.
I would clarify.
And I wanted to.
I feel certified.
I think so. Did you have, and you have other things you wanna discuss?
I have one, just one quick thing. And I know this is a conversation that's been around a while and it keeps being brought back up, but I just wanted to share a conversation I had with Greg Larson that is the buyer of that Leon Bright property and he's doing fabulous job out there. And I think he's making pretty significant investments in Park County. But during my visit there in that conversation, he was again, and I know he, I believe, appeared before the council about taking water to the east. So he just asked me to bring that up again for consideration. And he also mentioned that he himself is a civil engineer by trade. His sister-in-law is as well. She's more on the water side and she's getting her Indiana licensure for water. And he said, you know, if there's any way that something could be worked out or, you know, just through conversation and start talking about it, is they would be willing to donate any of the engineering time.
Design.
And design.
As long as they're certified in Indiana, that's good.
Well, that's why his sister-in-law's, you know, through that process right now.
Didn't we ask Troy or somebody to give us some kind of a rough...
Who winged on a rough estimate from U-Mac? They'd been out and looked at it, but I haven't got the numbers from them.
Whatever. He was just volunteering that, that he would be more than willing to donate, you know, whatever they were allowed to do on the engineering side of things if that was appropriate as helping with the cost share of a project like that, knowing it's...
Has he kinda put anything down? I mean, has he give it, has he done any major and looked at things, know what kinda flow rate he would need out there? I mean, I mean, are we looking at, you know, does he need an eight-inch line out there, six-inch?
I think he originally said that had a six-inch in mind. When I talked to Ronnie Junior, I had him spec us an eight. My thought is, if we do end up picking up other people out that way, I'd rather have too much than too little.
I agree.
What do we have coming to town? Are they eight?
You have a ten and a twelve coming to town.
Well, I'm just throwing out there. They're ready. Don't press up. You know, what if we wanted to eventually, say, run out to Belmore?
Which they would love.
Well, once you get out there, you do a tower, then you've got the whole lake property for growth. Water's the only thing people outside sitting literally want. They don't want, can't, they don't want the sewer. But, you know, I would have them spec this with that in mind because someday that would be a, probably a good thing to try and do. So we have eight and twelve coming to town. I wonder what we would need to incorporate that idea into the water line size. And I don't know, something I would ask them.
Yeah, I can throw that out as a contingency. Going up to, I'd say probably a twelve anyway. My thought is with the elevations going up to, you probably need some...
Oh, you have to have pump?
Yeah, you'd have to have some pumps and...
Meccawar system.
So maybe you wouldn't have to have a twelve.
Okay, well, I see your point. Yeah, I think it'd be absolutely...
I could see running to Belmore with an eight-inch, putting a tower in. We would probably have to upgrade our wellheads. Well, and I'm talking about down, I mean, to feed Belmore eventually.
Well, you'd probably have to add a couple wellheads. And I would say probably closer to that area down. If they, I don't know what their water table's like out that way. I really don't.
Well, just one thought out there.
Yeah, for engineering purposes, yeah.
Yeah, just to let you know that he has stated that he'd be more likely to have a conversation when you're ready for that part. Because what he's doing right now is he's actually digging new wells on the property. And if he knows that this is something that you would seriously consider, not that you've said yes, but it might change some planning that he's doing out there to, for water feeds. So.
Where?
And you've got his contact information, I don't, that's all I have.
Okay. I was gonna make a, make an appointment to the C's.
We need to do two.
Two of them?
Randy and Craig. Craig is gonna have to resign. He's taking a position somewhere that we're going.
Fantastic. Well, we can do one of them tonight. I was gonna, gonna appoint Kim Brown Cooper. Do we need a motion or just?
I think you do, you know. I move, uh, for Kim Cooper to, what is it, CBC?
CBC.
Dr. Board we're talking about, CBC Board.
She's gonna be a busy lady.
Huh?
She's gonna be a busy lady.
School board, too, isn't she?
And, uh, park board and probably something else, I'm guessing. I'll say, God bless her.
Yeah. Call, call the board.
Hi.
All right. Hi. Okay, so we gotta look for one more. Any volunteers at this stage? That? That's not a volunteer, huh?
Randy's just stopped in the visit.
Yeah, it's the volunteers and she raised her hand.
Well, I just wanna make sure if there's something addressed.
I guess we're ready to go with you, Jeff. Okay. First thing I have there is storm coordination on South Market. And they feel free to hop in here because I know that you've got some input on that. So we met down on, on South Market, I think it's been a week and a half ago now. We got Structure Point and Roger Dazar there, as well as representative from Maxwell Construction. And just got some input down there regarding the storm line that runs down through there. And Maxwell contends that the, well, it's not really contention, that the line, pretty much from their entrance, a hundred and, I wanna say nine feet or so, a hundred and thirteen feet north of that is not viable line. We know that the line a hundred and thirty-four feet south of that, of their entrance, also needs to repair. When we set up the MOU, we knew that we would have to enlarge that pipe and as part of New Hope's agreement with us, they were gonna refurbish that pipe. So they're on the hook for a hundred and thirty-four feet of fifteen-inch pipe, fifteen-inch pipe. So we've reached out to, well, they've reached out to New Hope to see if there was any movement. He in coordination with Kevin Kallens kinda had a conference call with the representatives of New Hope to see if there was any opportunity for cost sharing on that. And New Hope was, I don't think, very receptive to that for various reasons and, you know.
Well, didn't they tear it up though, Jeff? Didn't they destroy it?
Well, that was, you know, I know Key's contention that they were responsible for part of that damage. And my feeling on it initially was, my god, that pipe's been there forever. And Key's point was, you know, we just ran water down that, that whole storm drain from our flushing of the hybrids and we had no issues. Well, Representative Maxwell did take a little peek down the pipe when they were doing the dig there for the water pit and everything. And clearly you can see a lot of horse and wolves. Anyway, you cut it, it just needs replaced. So anyway, the bottom dollar number on that is about a twenty-thousand dollar bill to replace that. I know the Storm Board is gonna give that consideration at their next meeting, which was supposed to be tomorrow night.
Would this thing pipe be replaced in the construction of South Market?
No. However, there is a little bit of movement between Structure Point and Maxwell. It was going to be replaced, okay? The object that we're looking at is not have to do it twice, right?
Right.
So Structure Point is thinking that we may be able to get by with a fifteen-inch as opposed to an eighteen-inch by bypassing, taking basically all of New Hope's stuff, running it down to the new twenty-four-inch culvert that we just put in in between canopies, running that down there and then running our normal street and stuff down through the river. So is that pretty much it, Dave?
That pretty much. I, I mean, I reached out to Ken Olson, which he was at the meeting previous to that. And, I mean, my concern was that we weren't throwing money away. I mean, the pictures that I saw, just to be honest, I mean, they didn't do any damage to it. I mean, it's, it's old pipe. It's, you know, I mean, it's, it's time to replace it. It's getting replaced. It's gonna get replaced anyways. My concern was putting something in right now and then turn around and tear it back out in two years, years and a half.
So we put it in now, it's not going to get tore out?
No, Ken Olson and Roger have gotten, gotten together and they basically say that we can make this happen. And, I mean, obviously, we can take that cost off of the South Market project.
Just pay it ahead a little bit.
Yeah, basically. So...
Okay.
And I kinda wanted to wait and see what the Storm Board said, just because they were supposed to meet tomorrow night. I don't know if they still are or not. But I'll probably reach back out to Jim Bosley from New Hope and kinda tell him.
Well, Storm Board needs to technically approve this.
Right, yeah. And that's why I don't wanna, I don't wanna tell you anything that's...
Stormwater and whatnot. Is there a detention pond down there? Was there a detention pond or what's going on?
There was supposed to be a detention pond in that, in the original design. The first architect that they had for that was, I can't remember, she had a design and it wasn't big enough.
Civil engineer.
Yeah, architect or civil engineer.
So the...
Jennifer, is it Jennifer? Yeah.
So it wasn't, there wasn't enough room to, to, to...
To do a detention pond.
Okay.
So anyway, lo and behold, and she told me, it's not gonna fit. So anyway, Brian Hollers, I think is his name.
He's the architect.
Reached out and I think he got, I wanna say it was Roger that did the final engineering on that. And there's not a detention pond in there.
Should we be concerned?
Roger says that he's pretty sure it's good to go. And of course, he's...
Well, the valley we're going to is not far.
Right, right. And we also have on Michigan Street, we have it on, we have a storm on, I wanna say both sides of the road. On the, on the side of the road closest to New Hope, all I would have to do is come out about another, I wanna say forty, fifty feet with storm pipe. And I can run a dedicated pipe right down through there on that side of the road, too.
I think it's gonna be a little big pipe for all of us.
It, it all, it all comes to the Michigan, or the Market Street side with the slope.
Yeah.
So that, that fifteen-inch pipe with the twenty-four-inch culvert, the engineers tell me it'll take it.
Both engineers said, because when I was down there the day we met, and of course, some of those apartments aren't even done yet, but just the roof, roofing that you see down there, boy, it's gonna be a lot, a lot of water. And that was my number one concern. And they both assured me and Jeff both that fifteen-inch would handle it. And I'm thinking, well...
Now, now, let me remember, we redid culverts in that valley that's going to, didn't we? You know? I guess that's it.
If it doesn't get plugged up, it'll be just fine.
Yeah. Just keeping it all clean, you know, that's, that's just part of your regular maintenance. But, you know, I, I think there's been a lot of good discussion between Roger and, and Structure Point and even Maxwell Construction on trying to, to make sure that we don't get into a situation where we are putting stuff in and ripping stuff out. And we even had the conversation about the sidewalks and that kind of stuff. Because, you know, if it were just gonna be, you know, a year before we're able to get to South Market off the, look out to let and moving forward, you know, you know, we might leave the sidewalks out. Well, yeah.
To that end, I talked to Ken Olson about trying to light a fire under his butt, about taking care of our right-of-ways and stuff so we can try to move forward with this to where we're not spending money and ripping things out. And, you know, I mean, just like sidewalk. I mean, you're gonna have infrastructure going in there. I mean, you know, new water, new sewer, gas company's gonna have to be involved in this. So, I mean, it's gonna be a lot of money spent that don't have to be spent if we don't do this thing right.
So anyway, that's kinda where we're at on South Market and the, and the Seaport project. Cindy, do I leave anything out there that, you know, they?
I don't know. I think we're...
Okay.
So twenty twenty-three, is that the summer?
Four, four.
Yeah.
It got pushed down.
It's, uh, we have to make a decision by late June of twenty twenty-two, whether or not we need to extend on, on the right-of-way and that kinda stuff.
Yeah.
So...
Well, extend right-of-ways.
Extend the timeframe for letting.
Oh, oh.
And, and the right-of-way engineering.
Oh, good. Yeah, I know.
Well, but if they don't have a lot of their stuff done.
Why wouldn't they? What time do they need?
Well, you gotta get everything together. Plus, you know how it is in trying to get people to, to sign overgrown right-of-ways.
Yeah, all but golly, they got a year to go.
They've, they've got about, it's supposed to be done in October of twenty twenty-two or December of twenty twenty-two.
They got a year and a couple months.
Gonna be tight.
Well, he claimed to be, and tell me if I'm right or wrong with this, but he told me most of the historicals have been taken care of.
Yeah, the historical and the environmental, both of those, I think, are moving along.
We're basically down the right-of-way.
They need on it.
They need to, you know.
There's no issue in this delay regarding the funds that we're receiving, this is there.
No, the, the only thing is just making sure that we're making our deadlines and not, not missing an extension. I mean, that's, that's the thing to balance.
Concern been expressed to Ken about this whole right-of-way, I assume it has.
Could sit the due diligence to begin with, we wouldn't be where we are.
So we need to keep on top of that.
They need an employee out here on the ground talking.
Well, yeah.
That real.
We, we have, we have, we've had public meetings on this, have we not?
Yeah, I think you're, I think you're, I think we're supposed to have public meetings again. And I can't remember.
Designed a long time ago.
It's forty-one north. We're having public meetings, South Market.
It'd have to be South Market. You're not required to have any on forty-one north.
I wanna say.
Based on the funding.
Yeah, it puts a lot of time for the South Market with that public meeting.
I think there's another round coming up when they do the right-of-ways, so.
Probably so. We should have that sooner rather than later. We need to get Ken out here. Let's get him in the corner.
Get me up on.
Well, they can do it at the desk like they've tried to do before in this portions.
Wouldn't these extra ones cost us fifty-seven?
What the exact amount that it costs?
Okay.
So, any, any other questions on the South Market?
Not right now.
All right. Asbestos inspection at York and Jefferson, I just need to, are, are we greenlining for that? You gotta reach out to Katie.
Did you hear back from her?
No, I haven't. So as soon as I get the green light from Katie at Brownfields, I'd like your permission to go ahead and get Roger to schedule an asbestos inspection. Sounds good to me. Okay?
That, what, I emailed, I tagged you on the email. It read like that was their closing inspection statement.
That was the consultant.
Right.
The email, that was not Brownfields.
So Brownfield's gonna send us a separate one then?
I think they'd have to be...
The consultant has completed their report. Yeah, has turned it into Brownfields, but Brownfields is the funding agent. So.
So that's gonna be coming in the near future. So is there any reason we couldn't go ahead and do our asbestos inspection then? I mean...
It's not, I don't know.
On inspecting, right?
Right, yeah.
It's not like we're tearing it out.
Right. That's why I say I, I think we could probably go ahead and do that.
I can at least, I can at least get it scheduled because I'm anticipating getting a word back fairly quickly.
Well, I mean, even if it's a month or two, you know, that inspection's gonna be done and that's one less thing we have to do before we can start taking bids to demo. Is what my thought was.
The demo will require ID permits, so it'll be the timeframe for that.
Yeah.
Yep.
But it'd be one less thing to do later, I guess, is what my thought was.
Who does those?
The asbestos inspection. He's a guy, he's always a guy.
I know.
And then the...
And you got him, so you got a guy that's gotta go.
I have concerns about these guys.
Other than that, glad that the, everybody made it through the Bridge Festival safe and sound. And I, I think we had some pretty good crowds. I think the vendors were pretty pleased with, with, people were spending money is what I was told. And that's always been the thing.
What did you think, Pat?
It was good.
Yes, I thought so.
Very good.
Better than last year for sure.
Well, yes.
Bringing crowds from there to last year.
That's all I got, folks.
Hey, before I move on to Randy, I just wanna say again, thanks for the, to the utility, fire department and the police department for the great job you guys did in the storm. I think we thank PCI for warning the vendors and the crowd. Appreciate that, Randy. So just wanted to say again, so.
Yeah, look at those guys in the fire department. Even Eric Thompson was, was a big help with his chainsaw.
Big chainsaw.
Big chainsaw. And we appreciate his help as well. Cause it was, it was kinda hairy there for a little.
Yeah, he just texted me, said, we need my help. And you're going, he come to help. So it worked out pretty good. I mean, it was good team, team help.
It was a very short outage from what I understand. So I, I didn't lose power, so.
I think the guys finished up about, I did, about a quarter after twelve.
You did?
A little after midnight.
Really?
Time I got back to the shop.
Went off, came back on just a couple of minutes.
When I came back on, just a couple of minutes.
All the outage we had. Well, what, what caused the outage were your?
I think some tree limbs getting wound up, the primary embolism fuses.
Just learn from what we happened to try to permit it. We have, well, considering what we had, we had very isolated outages.
Yep.
That was good.
Compared to what we used to have.
I, I believe it was tense, it was getting something.
I figured there's stuff that's soaked and run.
It was windy for a while.
Drop tree. They said sixty-nine an hour, trying to save you.
You, you ready, Randy?
Sure. On that same note, uh. Our, uh, weather siren was not utilized during that time and, um. It was explained they were, were instructed not to set it off unless there was a tornado. And I informed dispatch that from now on. That a severe thunderstorm with fifty mile an hour wind gust forecast twenty minutes before the storm hit. Would be good justification to set the siren off and let people know in the community. There was some concern about causing panic, which, uh, I think the, the bigger problem is, is if we have the information. And we have the ability to disseminate that information and we fail to do so, we're raising liability for ourselves. So from now on in, I will be requesting they go ahead and dispatch that immediately. That the speaker is now paid for by the town of Rockville and it'll be our decision to set it off and not somebody else.
So when the siren goes off, what's, what's all the evidence that could lead, is it just tornadoes?
The siren goes off, then the voice message comes across.
Yeah, well, you try and hear it.
Exactly, you might not be out at your place, but.
Where everybody's walking around on foot right uptown here. They'll announce, they'll announce what's going on.
Yes.
And if you hear it, prepare for bad weather.
Okay.
Then it just gives you an idea that something's wrong, let's find out what's going on, so.
Check your weather channel before the power goes off.
You know, it works good when we test it.
Okay.
So why are we paying for it if we're not gonna use it?
Looking for it.
So, um, I've addressed that issue. Um, no update on the vehicles yet, uh, shouldn't be any day, he's gonna call me. Give me time to clean out the other vehicles so we can tra- transport it up there and get it, uh, traded out.
What color are they, are they silver?
Yeah, silver, gray, yeah. Um, that's ones he had in stock, so.
Right.
Two of the same color. All full time and, uh, reserve officers worked during the festival. Had only, uh, two significant events during the festival, ones that intoxicated male on the sub, on the square that. Felt like he, uh, could take liberties with a couple of young females after approaching him in a booth. And had them scared to death, the other was a female that during the tent that had her money bag stolen. From a booth during the day by an unknown person, uh, but. I heard from more than one source that all the vendors in the tent shipped in and made up their losses, she, she did hand. Made crochet and knitting stuff. And so, it was an elderly woman and, and they helped out and took care of it. We had several other things going on in town, uh, the, uh. There is a specific sheet of all calls during that period on the desk that is a, um. News releasable event, so it'll. It can be released to the media or anybody, so, but we had, uh. Twenty-eight covered Bridge Festival complaints, which could be, um. Anything around the Bridge Festival, vendor complaint, parking complaint. Dispatch just kinda ties them all together, um, five welfare shifts. Six paper services. Five domestic situations, four disabled vehicles. Four animal bikes. Which we did have some problems with, uh, some dogs running loose uptown and, uh. We were trying to, uh, track down the owners of those things. And catch the dogs, but we, we weren't very successful with that, we had fifty-seven traffic stops and three reckless driving complaints. To us, it was a successful Bridge Festival also, nothing major occurred besides the storm. Uh, the Rockville, uh, or our new police one academy that was approved last time is up and running. Uh, officers are already completing some of the required training. Rockville Baptist Church on US forty-one southeast, south of town, uh, Pastor Gary Jones is one of our chaplains. And saw the need in the police department for replacing the, the paint on the inside from the water damage and the flooring. And, uh, he's brought to his church and they've stepped up and they're gonna replace and install, uh, some new, uh. Vinyl tile. It's, uh, like, uh, like, um, warranty. And, uh, they're also gonna paint the walls for, so that's gonna start this week, I spent a day cleaning out that front room and tearing up the carpet. And I borrowed your, um, wheelbarrow that George brought back, so I'm gonna go looking for it. Rick Keller's gonna be, Rich Keller's gonna be assistant of painting and the church is painting for all materials, they're also going to take that awning off the front of the building that's so badly stained. And he's gonna run it to tear it open, give it new material for them. So, uh, that's very nice, the building's painted and everything, uh. We just had some different people who's been cutting the grass and they've been bone the grass on the building, so it kinda covers up the new paint, but. Had to order tires for, uh, his two thousand nineteen Chevy truck. Uh, this weekend, and it's still burning oil on it, if you recall, I brought you pictures that they changed out some pistons and rings. And, uh, the damage of those areas, but it's still under warranty, it's still burning oil, uh, they've got a scheduled get it back in this week and that could be. Something in the block even, so.
Is this a Dodge?
No, a Chevy. Also had to get tires for the two thousand sixteen Ford of Bill McMichael. Officer Chris Fisher's wife just had, uh, is having, had a hip injury, she's gonna have surgery on, uh. November the eleventh and he's requested up to three weeks off to take care of her and assist with that, get her to therapy and appointments and stuff, so. We'll be short him, and then in December, uh, somebody else decided to have a baby coming in December, so, uh, he's gonna watch the maternity leave. I gave you guys some information on the back of my report, uh, the sheriff's department's information for this year. The county is, uh, raising the salaries of emergency personnel. Dispatchers and jailers will make a thirty-six thousand, which is our starting pay for an officer. And their starting officers will make forty thousand five hundred, that doesn't take into account, uh. Longevity pay, which they get two thousand for every five years, up to the fifteen to twenty years.
Can I ask a question?
Yes, sir.
Not related to payment, they're staffing? How many officers they have on duty patrol every day? I've heard different numbers.
Depends on the day.
They, uh, they have scheduled, I'm, I'm just curious, how do they? Monday through Friday, they have, uh, today, for instance, the sheriff and the chief deputy, uh, detective sergeant.
You have a whose patrol?
Two patrol officers.
Okay, that's what they normally do, I thought.
On nights after three AM, there's just one.
Yeah, four. When do they get back to two?
In the schools, well, see, that's the problem, they got two on schedule at nights, but they got one guy that's basically quit. And so it's gonna be one guy on and until they get that position filled, but the other problem is every time somebody takes vacation or sick leave, they're.
Do they run twelve hour shifts to?
Yes, they do. So they need. That's their problem.
Well, yeah, I'm just curious how the officers are, you know, I mean, I mean, this is great, don't get me wrong, they gotta do it for them.
Uh, and I know they got a different funding source than everything else, so I.
Well.
I'm just asking us to consider it when we go to do.
When you say they had different funding sources, clarify for me, sounds like.
Well, they make a little bit more money.
Well, they had the same funding source, but they just have larger pool.
Yeah, yeah. So they get a bigger bite of the public safety tax for what?
Right.
They get about.
We get ours based on census, just like they.
Right, right.
Okay.
But when we go to do the, the salary ordinance, I guess we need to keep that part of the money.
Yeah, yeah, well, I appreciate the information, Randy.
So I, I provided all that with you, there's also a letter floating around there from the county council that's going out to all citizens in the newspaper. But on the sheriff's department's things, you can see their salaries, the base salary, uh, will be forty thousand five hundred first year. Uh, they get a thousand for being an academy graduate, which if they don't do that in the first year, they're not employed anymore. Instructors, they get, um, a thousand dollars for each thing that they are instructor in. And then their longevity pay. So that's on, on top of the base pay of forty thousand five hundred. So they're all making the same thing except for the longevity and the stipends for training.
Right.
Some incentives, and we've kinda done that a little bit, but we can. Push that around when it comes out.
Well, we're, I'm just, I'm just amazed they have the resources to do that, uh. Cause that's a pretty good increase, it's not hurt us.
That American.
Well, you can't use one time funding to fund long term things.
I agree, I mean, I agree.
I'm sorry.
Seems to be.
As I recall, they also gave, uh, all emergency responders last year, out of that American, uh, rescue plan funding, uh, a thousand dollars just. Bumped because of working through the, the emergency the last year and a half. That was a one time payment. I have not got to follow up on the two hour parking enforcement doing.
Well, we're gonna talk about that too.
Other scheduled things right now.
I mean, historically, Randy, how has it worked? If there was an issue, they would call, but that didn't happen a lot, because I typically, I know one vendor, a property owner was here last meeting. And apparently he had some issues and he, he asked and informed the property owner next door, you know, this is kind of a problem, they, they, they took care of it.
And that's what the most, majority of the problem is, is a neighbor has their employees or they are parking in front of another. Businesses' property instead of parking in front of their own and, uh.
Look, for the bank, Tom, can't they all park back behind, don't they all have back rear entrances?
It seems to be more parking back there, I've noticed behind the north side of the square, it used to be kinda empty.
Yeah, and even this side too, where the bank was, cause people are parking their cars.
I, I talked to the west side and we'd like to be left out of any enforcement if you do that.
Experiencing.
I, I did, I talked to every single one of them and none of them are wanting it enforced, so.
Well, and I don't know. Did, did?
And we have to be the parking issue on the square, so.
Yeah, I, I just want to go with this, I'm sorry, did Main Street send a, a letter to all?
Oh, yeah, indicating that they have been given the authority to work with the police commission in order to, um, help make people aware of. Actually, I have the letter in my office, but basically indicating they had some kind of authority to do something in compliance with it, which wasn't what you said, you said to go talk to the police.
Well, I mean, they control the activity of the police department.
Which I have on text, hold on a second.
I, I, I just wanted to say that, you know, first off, do you understand how does it work, I assume there hasn't been occasions where you've been called because someone just didn't want to front individual. And, and, and some of the broad.
And previously we were told there were the Norvins, but Randy found it and gave it to us, so.
And that wasn't you that sent the email about the, um.
Oh, the market, no, that wasn't me, but I did respond to that, um, the Sixth Circuit Court of Appeals for the federal courts. Has ruled that market chalking tires is unconstitutional invasion of your right to privacy under the Fourth Amendment. That's not our circuit, the Seventh Circuit is our circuit, but that's probably coming to a circuit near you soon.
Well, I don't know, we can't hire some of the chalk tires, that's not gonna happen, we just don't have, we, we need more money to pay police and where are we gonna get money to pay a tire charter? I'm just saying. It seems to me the system we've had has, has worked, uh, and I will, will work. For a while until we come up with some way to do something, and we need to do something, I, I don't know. But, but I, I'm just saying, I don't know where we're gonna put the money, I'm, I'm, my head's swimming here with these.
I think yes, if, uh. If a complaintant calls and says, hey, this vehicle's been parked out here for a while, I mean, if they had some sort of, uh, picture. Showing that it was there two, three hours ago, then I could probably do something to enforce that. You know, for them to tell me that now it's been out there for two, three hours.
Right, they're gonna have that.
Right, I just can't take their word for it, right?
So, I mean, the problem you have is unless you're sitting there monitoring it, how are you gonna say it's been there for two or three hours?
Right.
Even if you took a photograph at one o'clock and came back at four, type and took a photograph, that doesn't conclusively prove it was parked there.
And it didn't leave and come back.
Right, um, what Fort Wayne did was they hired parking meters that have a video monitoring system that gets activated when the car moves. Pulls into a slot and backs out of the spot, now that financially is just not something you could do with every parking spot, but what you could do is maybe two spots on each side or something like that.
If, if it's isolated to specific.
But, like I said, right now, it's just the north side of the square and I guess maybe the east or the south side, I don't know, but. Nobody on our side of the square is complaining about parking, so. They said if you did something about parking, okay, we'll do whatever you wanna do, but it's not, so I, I guess it's more of an isolated incident than what has been indicated, is what I would say.
Wayne, that complaint's just on the north side and the east side.
Yeah, so. But it, manpower wise and, you know, we'd have a real problem if any of them went to court to be able to actually prove that it was a, they violated the ordinance.
I will say, I, I think the signs might have worked, so I noticed, uh, one individual from Iowa in a van, apparently he was camping out over on York Street, um. At night, so at least he didn't park on the square and camp.
Well, and so the second thing I would say is that really enforcement of the ordinances isn't something that falls under the police commission, they're more so. Regulating the administrative stuff of the police department, you know, hires, fires, promotions, uh, acts of. You know, malreport by the officers, you know, that.
Say that again now, say, okay, basically you're saying we, we, we have authority.
You guys set the laws.
We pass the ordinance.
We pass the ordinance, they enforce it.
Right.
Right, but you guys pass it and tell them to enforce it, you guys describe what you wanna do. The police commission doesn't have any authority as to enforcement, their administrative oversight over the department.
Well, there were staffing and whatnot, right?
Right.
Yeah, so if we don't enforce it, they can take action against us.
Right, they could.
Okay, okay.
But you guys are the ones that determine what ordinances you have and what the penalty for violating.
Well, we've done that, right.
But you've not enforced it in twenty-two years.
Well, we have written tickets, but it's been brought to some people's attentions apparently at times that there is an ordinance and it could be.
Has it been brought to that particular organizations?
No, I asked that at your meeting, they said that they didn't think they had authority to go talk to that organization.
As a neighbor, can you not just say this is causing a problem?
But that was my question at the meeting, if, if you recall, I asked, well, did you go talk to your neighbor and ask them to move their cars and. They specifically said that they didn't think they had authority to do that.
And I think they can also, I think they, was part of what they were hopefully communicating to their, to the businesses was if you have access in the back. Why don't you start utilizing it?
Well, and that's fine, I, I think that's appropriate, but.
Did they, did they do that though?
Here's the letter, I can read it if you want me to. To all Rockville business owners, as you may have heard at the September Town Council meeting, a motion was made and unanimously approved to rescind the two hour parking restrictions around the courthouse square. You now need to be aware that as of Monday night, October fourth, two thousand twenty-one, the town council at the request of Main Street unanimously voted to rescind the directive and reinstate the same two hour parking limit. It's also agreed that Main Street would work directly with Public Safety Commission to explore and enact ways to enforce this ordinance. This is a common practice throughout our state and is a critical issue in many small towns struggling to attract and retain retail and other commercial businesses. Any car parked, all caps, any car parked in bold, any car parked in a two hour restricted parking space around the Park County Courthouse Square for longer than two hours is in violation of the law. We respectfully request that. We respectfully request that business owners on the square require that they and their employees park in non-restricted spaces so that these spaces can be used by customers and clients. While, while this may be a slight inconvenience in our small town, it is perfectly legal request. And until we can get enforcement practice implemented, please be kind to your neighbors and fellow business people. It is their sales taxes and food and beverage taxes to help pay for our schools, roads, pop, police and town services. And by the way, respecting others and banning the law sets a much better example for our children and future generations than choosing which laws to obey based on likelihood of getting caught. Thank you, Main Street, Rockville.
So I don't think that it's really viable to have that on the inside by the courthouse. That would require all employees working anywhere, even the courthouse or on the square, they'd have to go someplace else to park. And it's just, there's no place else to park. The other thing is just visitors coming or temporary visitors to the courthouse.
Right.
Whether it be jurors or attorneys, yeah. People that witnesses have sat in court for six, seven, eight hours waiting on to be called to testify, so that kind of thing is just not feasible.
I think once we get a parking lot.
That'll help.
Hopefully, you could at least request that those people park there. I mean, a lot of people that go to visit cities and things don't expect to be able to park right where they're going. You have to park and walk, so. At least be where the request.
So are you gonna take it some, some juror that parks on the outside, Brandon?
That's the thing. You know, and, and how are you gonna determine who is who? Or, or what their legal purpose has been up there would be. Now, prosecutor's office, we'd probably get that ticket and say that was a juror.
I mean, even now, there's usually open spaces on the south side. You could.
Yeah, and, you know, with the doctor's office being right over here, they've got a lot of traffic in and out. And most of the time, they're not there for a couple hours, but their employees park on the ins, in the middle portion and there's no place for them to go. Our AMC's got a nice parking lot out back for all its staff, so. So we're, we're still working on it.
Well, I'll have some more updates on a lot of valid points there, there, Randy. Not an easy thing to
Right, and I can't say that, hey, we're gonna enforce this.
Well, yeah, I go back to what we've been doing.
Every day.
Basically, I think historically, the owner sees a continuous violator.
Right, they. Very seldom though that we have two hours to sit.
Well, you guys get to.
No, no.
So, yeah, it, it, it's.
The easiest way to enforce that would be the parking meter.
Well, yeah, you always have.
It would be. If there's no money in the meter, I'd rather take it. But that's another cause, so.
Yeah.
Yeah, pretty much run everybody out of there with those. I'm thinking we would. Uh, one thing I will say while we're on this subject of Main Street. Melissa has volunteered to be a liaison between this board and Main Street. Since she volunteered, I'd like to take advantage of it. If she was here, I mean, I'm sure she would, you know. But that way they can convey their concerns. She can bring them back to us. We kinda know, instead of going through this all the time, I'm gonna kinda condense it down with, with her. So.
Well, Pat, you're here. You're Main Street. You're a business owner. Are you here for any, 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 any insight here?
I slept late and I'm still awake, so I just came over to see what you're doing.
We're trying, we're trying to figure that out too.
No, and the parking issue is always there, but if you've got people coming to court, can't there be some kind of a little permit thing that they could stick on their dash that says juror at court? So when you go by the car, you know why they're there.
Well, I see.
I mean, that seems to me to be a simple way to say, you know, don't fuss about them. They're here because they gotta be.
Why can't we just limit the parking on the areas that want the parking limited and not limit it on the areas that don't want it limited?
We could do that.
That would be an interesting ordinance.
You know, I have plenty of people that come to my office there that are longer than two hours to get out of the car, park in a handicapper and a wheelchair and can't meet two-hour parking limits. We do a lot of this daily.
You, you know, the other side of that is, I don't think that business owners are taking into account that a lot of people can park on the square and walk around to every shop.
Right.
And not move their car. So just because they're parking in front of your shop and not currently in your shop doesn't mean they won't be here, haven't been.
Well, yeah, I think the biggest violators are local people. I, my gut feeling is, I mean, they're local people and they don't appreciate the problem they may be causing.
And the complaints that I've gotten are because business owner over there is either employed or that business owner is parking in front of my business. Yeah, instead of theirs.
Randy, in the last ten years, how many complaints have you had of that?
Maybe four.
And how many were the same business?
Two.
Well, honestly, it's, it gets complicated. There's always to go with it. Funding's a big issue. Of course, meters cost a pretty penny too. I, I, I don't have the answers. It's just, um, something we're gonna have to work with for a while until we figure out what works and what's not.
What says the directive from the board that you're wanting Randy to enforce this two-hour parking?
Well, that's what we have at this point, is it not?
Well, in twenty, like I said, in twenty-two years or maybe longer, and I've just gone by what Bill said, you've never enforced it yet.
Well, he's enforced it when asked to enforce it.
Well, he's asked him to move.
We haven't actually written any tickets.
Haven't written any tickets, no.
Maybe we ask them to have a conversation with what appears to be the worst offenders.
They complied. They moved their car apparently and everything worked out.
Because if you're filing ordinance violations, you have to either have the town attorney or the prosecutor file the ordinance violation, so that's why I'm asking that question.
Well, at this point in time, I, 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 I know I'm not sure how to answer you, Randy. Uh, we have the ordinance. We've asked Randy to enforce the ordinance. I'm saying enforce the ordinance when he's requested, when there's a, when there's a problem. I don't, we, we can't have someone going around parking tires. That, that, that can't happen. We can't afford meters right now. We don't know what they cost. I'm sure they're expensive. So the best we can do at this point is to, when you receive a complaint, you have to go and investigate. Hopefully, it won't be a lie. Anybody else wanna chime in?
I did. Did you ignore me?
What, what did you?
Well, I, I'll just tell you that I park on the square at the end down by the church and I intend to continue to do so.
Okay, okay.
Uh, but has anybody complained about it?
No, I imagine they will now when they see this video.
Well, but, but Randy, what did you say?
I said.
That's what I was gonna say about, since you don't wanna enforce it on the west side, everyone's gonna start parking on the west side.
I don't care where people park.
Well, I, I, I got you.
Park where you wanna park. You don't tailor laws because one person or a group of people complained, and that's not why you tailor laws.
The west side and the south side both have additional parking with the middle lanes, so.
Right.
The other two don't, so.
I've done some shopping uptown, you know, over the years. If there's a parking spot there, I park. If not, I'll go to the, if I'm on the north side, I'll go to the south side for the spot. I parked on York Street. I parked on Jefferson Street. That's.
Lately, I've been parking by the bank because the bank's not open and then I walk.
Last ten days, we parked a lot at the police department and walk up here, so.
But I will tell you, at the courtesy, I stopped there all my neighbors and talked to them and none of them have a problem with how parking's working on that side of the square.
Well, without an ordinance.
It's not gonna matter.
Well, I'm not. I'm just saying, without it though, without it though, you, 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 you can't request someone to move the car after two hours. So we need to have the ordinance.
Well, I mean.
Enforcement of the ordinance.
You could have no overnight parking. You could have no parking certain hours. I mean, there's things you can do there besides just the two-hour parking.
Well, so it can be crafted more to fit our particular situation.
And you could mark certain spots and not mark other spots also.
You know, it's a good point. The east and west or the south and the west has additional foundational parking. And apparently the complaints have came from the north and east, where there's not that case so much.
So it could be more tailored to specific needs, I guess, is what I'm saying.
Well, I don't disagree at all.
But like, for instance, I have mediation tomorrow and whoever comes to that's gonna be parked there all day for eight hours. So, I mean, there's different needs.
Yeah, that's a great point. Whereas retail shops, uh, food places, they, it's, it's a come and go much more. And really, well, there are some on all, I don't know, the south, south side is, well, yes, there is. There's Pat in the corner. Yeah, there's Pat. But then there's what? There's over on the north side or the west side, there's a couple.
Just to throw in a little anecdote on this, talking to your neighbors, when we first bought this in the first few years there, the employees of this office parked one, two, three rows straight in front of it because they wanted this open so their customers could come. And so Joe, if any of you knew him, know that he was, had his ways of being very persuasive. He came over one day with a very large bag of cookies for everybody in this office and said, do you think you could consider parking just a little differently because our customers can't come in, nor can our vendors unload and unload? Because they can't park. And then they didn't have any more problems.
Well, and that's probably the right approach.
Yeah, I just.
But to send out a letter where you weren't told to send out the letter killing people, something like that's. I got three phone calls on that before I even got to my desk to see that letter, so. When really, let's just communicate with each other, you know?
It's just a difference, I guess. I, I would never consider going to a legislative body before I had a conversation.
Right.
But on that same note, I get people calling because their neighbor dog.
I know.
Pooped in their yard.
I get those same calls and usually I say, have you talked to him? And they'll say, no, we don't wanna make a man.
But.
Sending the police is not gonna make a man, right?
Right, you're always better off to talk to somebody before you go send an officer or send a public letter or things of that nature, so. That's probably the key is communicate, but, so you're not saying it's a mandate for him to write a ticket every time somebody complains that Randy needs to use his discretion?
Discretion, yes. That's what we're talking here. Basically, it's what we've done in the past. I mean, it's worked for the most part.
Okay, that's why I would die down because that's what the three angry phone calls I got were.
If we need to craft this ordinance better.
Well, it, it's okay as it's worded, as long as he's allowed to use his discretion, but if it's a mandate that if you're there more than two hours, we're writing you a ticket.
Well, certainly not what I had in mind.
There were a handful of angry people waiting to discuss.
And is it?
Let me differentiate the four business hours or?
Normal business hours, something like that.
Yeah.
And I don't take that, does that apply to handicap parking?
No, it wouldn't to handicap, but bad example. We didn't find it.
Look, look.
Yeah.
But, all right, non-handicap person that doesn't walk well, have it that. I guess what I'd say is that we should, as business owners, you know, if there's a problem with the neighbor in business, talk to them.
And, yeah, and the business owners should all be respectful of one another. There's ample space behind, park behind.
Okay, we'd be disoriented to them.
Let's get off the horse.
For tonight, I'm sure we'll revisit. Are you ready, Randy?
I can just sell my claims and put it forward.
Sure, yeah, so I have a claim, two hundred five, four oh two, nothing out of the ordinary that I saw.
I'll make a motion to per.
A second.
All in favor?
That's all.
Um, no, nothing.
Really?
Yeah, I'm good.
He's happy to play.
I think it's working on, but I think it's working. I, we have small claims court tomorrow afternoon. That's the next thing.
Oh, we do have a couple of properties that have made improvements.
Oh, yes, we did dismiss one because they had made it better. Uh, we have another one I have to file to dismiss that Randy said had made improvements also, so that, we got two total that have fixed it up. And it sounds like we may have a third one here soon, so. And then the Derek Cerny hearings, the twenty-eight, as you guys all know, I've been talking with his attorney. You know, we may have some resolution coming possibly, so.
Are we meeting here or are we meeting?
It's set for here currently at seven o'clock. I believe, right, Randy? Or is it six? I don't remember which time it was.
There was, originally, we were supposed to have like the executive. That was about seven.
So.
This is for the hearing now.
Right, it's whatever was in the notice. I, I don't know, but anyway, we've been talking. There may be some resolution, I think, possible to be had between.
Before.
So, uh, we're talking about that. Randy and I have been working on that too. And Randy, as far as this, there's a FOIA request made to the Rockville PD. He's citing the Indiana Code as to um, university, U C and colleges, so we don't have to.
Ours, ours is different, but.
Yeah.
It's actually a policy procedure.
Yeah, but, but, yeah.
I think that's the one that got five hundred dollars from our insurance company.
Yeah.
As a settlement.
Well, anyway, so. I can respond if you want me to. That's all. I couldn't resist. You baited me into it.
Well, I'm just checking. Any old business?
I think we've covered that.
Uh, well, I guess, you know, we have, we need to have some workshops coming up somewhere. November, start looking at payroll ordinance. And just anticipate expenses for, for, uh, I, I, I could leave Jeff with some revenue estimates and see if we can work on, uh, get my own stuff out and try to.
Expenses are going up.
Yeah, coming. Well, all the funds look pretty good through, uh, doing current report. Pretty balanced, nothing.
Take an extra line for paper.
Oh, yeah, we're gonna have additional fuel costs, um. Die, I just.
Do you want to schedule or do we want to schedule?
Well, when's our first meeting? It's like November first, isn't it?
Yeah, November first is.
Yeah, why not November first? Uh, let's all have a few good nights of rest before then. And then November first, we will, uh.
Meet after our.
Well, we'll just set the dates.
Oh, alright.
Uh, that we wanna get together. Then we'll take off the, uh, the weekend, sure.
So he's staying on that meeting.
Well, if I didn't, yeah, I would like to schedule something.
It seems like they go on for a little bit, so.
Sorry, implosion. Okay. I'm moving, Jerry.
Ask Pat if she had anything she wanted to talk about.
No, seriously, I just came over to this. Of course, I have one more.
Alright.
The email I forwarded to you, Dave, about the Scott Pet and the easement versus the tap fee.
We, we agreed to. Forego.
Forego that, that tap fee for them, so.
We got easement, they, they get that tap.
Wade the fee.
Yes.
Yeah.
Is it? I think Nathan said maybe he'd ask Jeff or Brady or something. I don't know if either one of you wanna communicate that to him or?
I forwarded the information to Jeff, so I don't think I have his number anymore, but if somebody gives it to me, I can call.
I'll shoot him, yeah, I'll shoot him texts and just say that, that we're waiting the tap fee for the center.
Yeah, 'cause that was kind of the easement thing. He said he didn't wanna pay, you know, have all the easement thing going on and then turn around and have the tap fee and.
Sure.
So if he would probably appreciate it, he would.
Sorry about that. I was gonna bring that up.
That's okay. Yeah, I, I just remembered.
So, I'll, 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 I'm moving in.
Hang on, Randy's got something.
Oh, uh, since this is the last meeting of the month, uh, October thirty-first is Halloween. Can you set Halloween hours for October thirty-first?
It's on a Saturday this year, isn't it?
It's a Sunday.
Oh.
They've, Main Street's set up on five to seven, I think.
Is that on Sunday though? That's what I thought. So could we?
For the square?
That's on the square, yeah, but do you wanna set Halloween hours for the rest of the town? One day is.
I was saying, we usually do a five to nine or?
Let's do Saturday, the thirtieth, five to nine? Or do we wanna do Friday?
I'd do it on Sunday, at the same time they're doing, because they're already dressed up and moving around. I didn't, I think two nights in.
Five to nine.
I don't know if we should do nine on the Sunday.
Five to eight.
Five to eight.
Our date sounds good to me.
The square's five to seven, town, five to eight on the thirty-first.
That was a motion.
Free candy at my office.
I'll, I'll, I'll second that motion.
All in favor?
Pretzels and beer cheese, nothing?
Now I make a motion to.
We think for, no beer.
I seconded.
Beer cheese, yes. I'll tell Nicole. I'll tell Nicole.
I seconded.
All in favor?